Seek a motion to. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the October eighth regular meeting and the October twenty third special meeting.
So moved.
Andy.
Mrs. Stone.
I.
Dr. Sauter.
Hi.
This is Trent.
Hi.
Dr. Santiani.
Hi.
Mrs. McKenna.
Hi.
And we will welcome Dr. Hunt.
Good evening. I often get harassed about having a hard copy of my presentation, but uh tonight it's uh gonna come in handy. Well, maybe not. Here we go. All right. So this evening, uh like each meeting, we do try to highlight some of the amazing things going on in the district. So uh a variety of recognition and some highlights. I'll give you board a brief update on strategic planning, uh facility master planning, uh and then want to spend a little bit time of time talking about profile of an engaged learner and kind of the next phase of that in terms of uh our ability to measure those competencies and skills moving forward. Uh and then we have the opportunity to share with you some work that's uh been ongoing regarding some fundraising and uh a project uh for uh our softball facility uh up at the high school. So without further ado, um I have the opportunity to uh introduce high school uh assistant principal, uh Tom Lombardi, who is going to help us with the first recognition for this evening. Thank you, Dr. Hunt. So my name is Tom Lombardi. I'm an assistant principal at Upper Arlington High School. I'm I have the honors tonight of uh presenting our Corral students to you uh in lieu of Brandon Moss, who is um currently the lead of our musical and in holding auditions for our upcoming musical. So he was unable to to be here. So the Ohio Music Education Association sponsors all state ensembles in several areas at their state conference in February. Each spring, hundreds of students from across Ohio submit auditions for one of a select few coveted spots in each group. Griffin, Marley, and Jimmy are three of just one hundred and twenty students from across the state selected for the all-state choir. They are currently preparing music individually and will travel in February to rehearse for three days with a nationally recognized corral clinician and their peers from around the state, culminating in a performance at the O M E A Conference, which is an enormous honor. We have them here with us. Um in in addition to this, I would like to now introduce Chris Lape, who is the orchestra director at Upper Arlington High School to to uh give some other students some recognition.
Good evening. I come to as both uh the Upper Arlington High School Orchestra Director. I'm also the Chair of the O M E A South Central Region, uh which encompasses twenty counties uh from Franklin County down to the Ohio River. Um and so part of that is I am in charge of the South Central Regional Orchestra, which is an auditioned high school orchestra. Over a hundred and twenty students uh in our region auditioned for this orchestra and thirteen of our students here at Upper Arlington High School uh were admitted into the orchestra, which is really exciting for us. Uh they've already had a rehearsal, uh but later in the month, uh there will be a three-day weekend that they spend with our guest conductor, which is Doug Droste, who is the Director of Orchestras from Walden Wallace University, uh who will work with them for those three days and it'll culminate in a performance. Uh there are a hundred and thirteen students, uh including strings, winds, and brass uh in the orchestra that they'll be performed with, and they'll get to perform standard orchestral literature.
Um at this time, I'd like to invite the students who are in attendance uh up to the podium. Line up. Don't be shy. And if you could, please just introduce yourself, give your grade level, and then before you head up front, uh and then we're gonna do a picture with the board. So just introduce yourself and what grade you're.
My name is Griffin Crowe, and I'm in the junior year.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Zalkowski, and I'm also in the junior.
I'm Marley Nemeth. I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Emily Lynn, and I'm a junior.
I'm Vivian Bennett, and I'm a senior.
So uh too often, we we take for granted the amazing things that happen here. Uh this is a result of a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication as well as talent. So congratulations to you all. And I'm sure you would also recognize this is a culmination of the hard work of the teachers uh and as well as your parents supporting them. So let's give them a huge round of applause, please. And board, if you've come down for a picture. We're gonna go right up here if you want to get a picture. Uh at this time, I'd like to uh invite uh Ms. Dawn Brown to please join me at the podium. So annually, our middle school students get to have the opportunity to take trips out of town, and it's uh I think if we all think back to the experiences we had when we were children, it's those trips uh on the bus and spending time together that really build relationships and and really enhance the kind of the educational value of what's going on as well. Uh and this year was no exception with our Hastings Middle School students, as they had the opportunity to enjoy uh a day in Pittsburgh and on the way home. Uh a day that was filled with great memories could have been a day of tragedy uh when a semi truck cut into one of our school buses. Uh and if not for the amazing professionalism uh of the driver, uh a a day of true happiness could have turned out very, very differently. So I wanted to take a moment this evening to recognize Dawn. Uh thank thank both her and Cardinal Transportation for their professionalism. Uh there's there's no question, anyone that we have talked to, whether it be students or or adults on the bus, lives were saved that day because of uh the performance of Dawn, and we just want to thank you for taking such great care of our students and and doing everything you did on that mo- in that moment uh to protect uh our young people. So please join me in recognizing Dawn Brown.
Thank you very much. I feel very honored to be around children, but that actually was a special group. We built a bond on our way up there. So I'm just thankful that the Lord was prayers all over that bus and he brought your children home safe to you, and it didn't turn out in tragedy. And I just thank you. I'm just nervous of you.
So Dawn, on behalf of the Board of Education, we have a uh a special certificate uh for you as well as a uh a T-shirt and a keychain uh for you to remember. So thank you for everything you've done, and thank you for giving me the basis. Please join me one more time in recognizing Dawn Brown.
Dawn, I would I would just like to say thank you for being so um calm and took such great care of our kids on behalf of our entire district. We are so appreciative of you. Thank you.
Uh also back there, I tried to get her to handle the introductions. I like to delegate that as much as possible. Uh but Penny Stires was uh also on the trip, one a principal that gets engaged with students and and was part of it. And when I picked up the phone and uh the phone at at that moment, there was obviously a great deal of panic because she was in a bus ahead. Uh but Penny uh also did an amazing job uh managing that crisis, working with Karen and communications to 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 um prepare for communication and get everyone homes uh safely. Also, on the bus, a staff member, Zach Prouse. Uh I do want to recognize him as well. So if you could just give those two individuals a big round of applause. Thank you, Dawn. All right. It's a uh evening of having guests join me at the podium. I'm gonna ask Logan to come on up. Uh I think most of the board is aware this year, we uh we tried something a little different, and we turned over the keys to the car uh to a student for a day. And actually, we turned it over to two students. Uh both Logan and Gigi. Logan's a seventh grader uh at Jones Middle School, and Gigi is a sixth grader. Uh Logan i- is here this evening. Allegedly, Gigi has a conflict with cheerleading, so he's gonna he's gonna take this responsibility. Uh we had a full day of activity. I don't know if you were tired, but I was uh at the end of the day, and uh this evening I was gonna have him report out on uh the day that he that we had together. And then at board, if you had any questions for for Logan, I know he'd be excited to answer them, right?
Yeah.
All right. So right here in the microphone, buddy, it's all yours.
Uh my name's Logan, and we started when we went into the basement of Jones, and we just kind of saw the old structure of it and um this is the problems with it. Then we went up to the attic, both of them, and they talked about how there's flooding in one of them, and the other one else is old. And we also went on the roof. Then we went to the hub and we learned about the online learning that they do and how they can also have students bus over there for college courses. And and we also learned about the esports program that they're making there and then we went to Barrington Elementary, and we gave flowers to our favorite teachers there. And we watched a little bit of their explorations that they do every weekday there. Then we went over to the high school and we ate lunch and got tore. Then we had a meeting about um building a new sa- the new softball pitching batting area for the softball team there. And we also um we also met up with Arby Tex on Zoom call from Chicago to talk about what improvements we should make to Jones. And um that's it.
So I know I know you would never let the superintendent off that easily, board. Um is is there any questions you have or any feedback you'd like from uh Logan while we have him here tonight?
I do have a question, Logan. So does this make you want to be a superintendent or not want to be a superintendent? No.
So it sounds like you did a lot that day, which is pretty awesome. Um is there one thing that stuck out to you that as you think about your day and what you saw and what you experienced that we could all do differently to help support students like yourself?
What I can think of.
Well, I would just say thank you. You and your sister were really engaged. Um you ha- we Lou and I had the um pleasure of having a meeting with you guys, and you asked thoughtful questions. You shared great feedback. I do at that time, I think you guys talked about um kind of what you liked at Barrington and what you'd like to see at Jones, which I think is always helpful to hear from our students. So I just appreciate. I think you both took it really seriously and were really engaged, and we really enjoyed getting to spend some time with you. So thank you.
I I I can't believe he left two things off. Uh one, I know it may be because he doesn't want to have a snow day this year, but um we we did re- re- record a calamity call, so the voices you will hear if that were to occur uh will be Gigi and Logan. And then um also, and I need some clarification on the favorite lunch. Right. I know it was the breakfast meal, but uh we're gonna we're gonna have a Crawford family meal on the lunch menu for the remainder of the year uh as well. So uh an amazing job, and I know superintendent students, superintendents are busy people. So if you need to escape, you could certainly do that. Thank you. All right. Okay, just a couple of additional updates. Uh it's been a busy month in terms of having visitors in Upper Arlington and uh a a lot of work went into planning two very large events. Uh first, I'd recognize the Penn Conference. Uh way too many names to uh thank in organizing that. It it was all hands on deck uh from our staff, uh parents as well. Uh but over two hundred and eighty educators uh committed to the informal education program uh or the progressive uh program came together uh for, you know, a a weekend uh to grow professionally, and uh I heard nothing but positives from those in attendance. It was one of the largest uh conferences held. The only thing that uh made us all cringe a little bit was the, well, maybe we can do this again next year. And we're like, well, maybe two years. Let's take a little break. But um just an amazing uh conference, amazing opportunity to learn. Uh we had a lot of staff members participate, not only in the planning, but just in in the professional growth and development. Uh secondly, once every ten to fifteen years, uh we have the opportunity to host uh the Eastern States Consortium, and many of the boards are aware of this is a a group of thirteen schools east of the Mississippi uh that is really just committed to growing professionally together. So it's one where you develop relationships and with colleagues uh and thought leaders, uh but also annually, there's a a site visit where you go to look at the best practices that are happening in the district. And uh again, uh one of the highest attended conferences, we had over sixty individuals from thirteen school districts uh in UA uh and a lot of effort from our team um to just showcase our our schools. And uh again, I think once you when you when you're in something every day, uh you lose a little bit of perspective, and it's nice to bring in, whether it's through Penn or the Eastern States, outside individuals in to to just to remind you of how special of a place we have at UA. So uh thank you, board. I know all of you participated at some level of that as well. Uh also, just want to recognize Board of Education for your participation in the Ohio School Boards Association. This is the state conference annually that's been that took place the last couple of days, and I know you were all in attend- attendance. Uh but also in attendance were a a number of our students. Uh so we had Jones eighth grade uh uh choir perform high school uh symphony strings. And the Tremont, uh we had a group of students from Tremont that actually opened the conference by doing the Pledge of Allegiance. So thank you for your participation and again, just uh showcasing our students. Uh also, uh what many things I'm amazed at as I continue to see the events that take place in Upper Arlington. Uh the recognition for the veterans that took place throughout the district uh wa- was also amazing. So I just want to thank uh all of our staff that put those events together, and also just pause to thank all our veterans current uh those that are currently serving and those who have served uh for their service. It it is a good day for us to pause and give thanks and and appreciate all that was done throughout the district. Uh because it's not only a day of recognition, a lot of service activities are built to built around that as well, which is uh obviously a part of our our mission. Uh I know many of the board members also had the opportunity to uh participate in the Hour of Code. This is something that Diane Cale really initiated and 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 really has run with. Uh and it has grown exponentially in terms of the structure of it and who's engaged and involved. So uh this year, I certainly would recognize Diane and thank uh her for her leadership in this. Uh Leah Miller also had her pre-service teacher class participate and work with uh our young students and explorations. Uh obviously, we had students from the computer science classes come together. Uh the Ed Foundation stepped forward and sponsored T-shirts, so we knew who the student kind of teachers were uh along the way, transportation. So just a a large initiative or a day day of engagement around really important content, uh but also relationship building with high school mentors and interacting with young people. So uh a very good day of education for the district. Uh just a reminder, Coffee and Conversation uh series will hit an all-time high as we welcome uh Andy Geisfeld next week. Uh so he will talk about finance at our next Coffee and Conversation. And and again, we continue to get twenty to thirty people to just really engage in conversation about our schools, which is always productive. Um this year, we obviously have a theme for each one, but we do provide an opportunity for um open dialogue as well, and certainly look forward to uh hosting the next one with Andy. Uh I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Lutz and uh Dr. Ely at this point. Uh I think, board, as you, you know, I know you have uh been through one draft of the implementation plan for a strategic plan. Looking at bringing the profile of an engaged learner uh to life is a is a core component of this next strategic plan. And I always say, if there's something you value, you have to figure a way to measure and monitor it as it goes. Uh and Denise uh and and Kathy have been working really hard on trying to align uh our assessments and and feedback and our surveys to the profile, and we're ready to share that work with you tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Before we get there, I do just want to say really quickly about the Hour of Code, how impressive it was, especially our high school students. They were so engaged, and it made the learning so authentic and real, and to see the kids in the classrooms, like doing their hands-on learning. So all the work that went into that from our staff, the and our students, it was really impressive, and it was so cool to kind of see that unsiloing of the subjects where we had our kids who might be interested in teaching along with our computer science kids. Some of them those are the same kids. So like, to understand that you can be good at math and science and a great communicator, a great communicator, and understand the math and science piece. It was really um just a great thing that I think is so in align with our strategic plan. So just wanted to highlight that.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be here to share with you an update on the Engaged Learner Survey. I'd like to start with just a brief review of the Engaged Learner. Um as we know, it's our vision for all Upper Arlington learners, and it was developed with input from students, teachers, a district-wide work group. And it articulates the skills and characteristics that we believe will prepare our students to serve, learn, and succeed, both in Upper Arlington and beyond. When we look at the skills and characteristics of the Engaged Learner, we see that there are six components. So we recognize that solution seekers are curious and thinking critically with diverse perspectives and creating actionable ideas. The component of being creative, taking purposeful risks, building connections and innovating, being skilled communicators, giving language to ideas, listening with an intent to understand and to connect respectfully, being open-minded and empathetic, listening with compassion, understanding a range of perspectives and providing a space for all voices, being responsible and resilient, owning our actions, taking pride in our work, accepting challenges and persevering. And we're well-balanced. We make intentional decisions to enjoy academic, emotional, physical, and social aspects. When we take the Engaged Learner Survey, excuse me, the Engaged Learner, and we align it with our survey topics, this is what we have. So you see each of the six components identified um with the icons that I just reviewed. And what we've done is to go ahead and take survey topics um from the plant panorama platform. They have been vetted for validity and reliability, and we have aligned them with the Engaged Learner. As you'll notice, a number of the survey topics actually fall into um quite a few of the components. There's quite a bit of overlap. Um for example, emotion really regulation falls into five of the different components of the Engaged Learner. The one that we did add was hope. And the importance of hope um comes into play for managing stress and anxiety and being able to cope in adverse circumstances. It contributes to our well-being. It motivates us towards positive action. When we are hopeful, we believe that we can influence our goals and that our effort will have a positive impact. The next slide that we're looking at shows us how we have laid out the Engaged Learner as well as the culture and climate piece that we are going to be rolling out in the strategic plan this winter. So on the left-hand side, you see our survey topics and the connection that it has to the components of the Engaged Learner. We're looking at that in fall and spring. We have our results from fall. We'll be able to look at spring as a comparison. And then in the winter, coming up very soon, we're going to look at culture and climate as a whole at both building level and inclusively across the district. So under culture and climate, we're going to be looking at the topics of safety, school climate, teacher-student relationships, as well as culture, awareness, and action. Here's the actual information that we have from our fall survey results. Again, the topic is on the left-hand side. The connection that it has with our Engaged Learner is the next column. And then you can see grades K to two results. This is a local survey that our elementary schools have been working on so that they could round out student voice and collectively have K through twelve input and feedback from students. So the K-two survey is um a simplified version of the survey with um maybe one item in a series of smiley faces, three smiley faces that students can get some assistance from their teachers and answering. The grades three to five and grade six to twelve are the vetted measures from our panorama platform that we have used. Um and so you can look, grades three to five are determined um based on looking at the readability for those items. And grade six through twelve is a little bit more advanced. It has a few more items on it to capture student voice. One of the things that we're really pleased about um with our survey this year, this past fall, was that our response rate was eighty-four percent for grades three to twelve and ninety-four percent for grades K to two. So that is through the efforts of Dr. Lutz, um meeting with our school staff and administrators and um really making it very clear how important student voice is to us and how it connects and relates to the profile of the Engaged Learner. The last slide and what's really important, the stage that we're at right now, is how we can take action based on the student voice that we have. So we are having conversations to levels that I don't believe have been had up until this point. Our data that we're looking at that represents student voice is being considered by leadership teams, multi-tiered systems of support, school counselors, our mental health specialists are now linked to our student voices as well as our teachers. So we are now able to look at individual student input and able to have conversations. This gives us a place of quantifying those student voices and then asking ourselves questions such as, does this relate to what I see from the student in the classroom? Does this connect and look like the performance that I'm seeing from the student or the concerns that I have from the student? Observations, conversations, what are the students telling us? Does this match or does it not? Where do we go from there? Um I can share with you that building goals have been can uh developed in the past based on well-being and sense of belonging. So we'll continue with those goals. And we'll also adjust program planning based on student voice. Do you have questions?
Hi, thank you for giving us this update. I just had one question um at the elementary level, because I saw that the first question was about um it was on our report is is about the color, the zones of regulation. And I know um a few years ago, at least, the different schools were using different models. Are they all using the zones of regulation now? Like, have we created a more common language amongst all this, all the buildings?
Yes, the question that you're referring to is, can I get myself into the green zone? Right? And so at the elementary level, they are using the zones of regulation. Um that's very important. Is that a fair question to ask across the elementary level? Um what we might see is that that number of happy faces increases in the spring as students learn more about that. Um but yes, at the elementary level, they're using the zones of regulation.
Thank you so much. It it is fascinating, both as a parent and now as a board member, to watch the evolution of how we collect student voice and use that to inform what we do. Um and I can see just year over year. And I can see just year over year, continued investment and development of this process, right? So thank you for all the work that you and your teams have done to get us there. Just curious, I'm really excited to dig into some of these details and absorb that a little bit more. Have we started to look at, are there differentiations between grade levels? Is there value in giving a little bit, you know, finer cuts of some of the data to folks within the buildings to action where we see variance? Or are we not at that stage yet?
No, I think that's where we're getting. I'm really excited about that. And those are building level conversations. I've looked at the data and there is so much of it. And so you can pick a particular, say, let's look at sense of belonging, and you can drill down into the individual items about sense of belonging. And one of the things that Dr. Lutz and I just recently looked at was a huge change for that grade 6 through 12 in sense of belonging at the level of the item that says, how much support do the adults at your school give you? And that went up 22% points, 22 percentage points. That's huge. And when we look back, and I know I was not here last year, but when we look back and recognize that those were some of the building level goals that they had, and they took action and saw noticeable results. It's really exciting.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
I have a couple of quick questions. It seems as though to me, grade 6 through 12 is a huge amount to kind of compile together. And I'm just wondering if there's any thought behind that. Maybe it's the second iteration. If this is a common practice that goes on or because to me, middle schoolers and high schoolers are totally different animals.
Yes, that is based on the readability of the survey. So that is tied to the platform itself. What we can do is to filter by cohort and to look at particular grade levels. You can look at them by comparison. Some of the items that we've looked at, there's not a huge difference, but you can break it down by specific filters.
So do they all have the same exact questions?
Grades 6 through 12 have a few more questions than the grade 3 through 5. So the wording is a little bit different. And then there are a few additional items to flesh out that particular indicator.
And then the final thing I would ask, were there any surprises to you? You've just been here this year. So was there anything that really stuck out?
So I can't help but think, you know, of some of the data that I've had access to in the past in my previous district and some of the data that I'm looking at here. And you all are doing very well.
So I have a question. I have people ask me all the time, why do we, why do we need this information? Now, I know the answer to that, but I'd like for you to explain to people why it's important for us to know and how that helps their children academically and to grow as a human being to have this, what we do with this information? How we can find a red flag, maybe find somewhere where we need to improve in like the one school did that increased their numbers by 22%? And how that helps their children overall? I know, I guarantee this answer can be long. Let's try and not make it so long. But there are parents that ask, like, why do we need this?
Why do we need this whole child perspective? We know that unless students are ready and able to learn, take emotion regulation, for example, we have to be in our thinking brains. And unless we're calm, cool, and collected, we can't access that thinking brain, which is going to affect our learning, our ability to take in information, to process, to critically think.
I would just like to say thank you. I think the work that went into developing a profile of an engaged learner was extensive. And now this is the next iteration. I think it makes this a living document that we now have ways to say, here's where we need to improve. Here's where we've improved. Here's what we're doing really well. Here's where we have, you know, places to grow. So I just think that it is a really good iteration of the next step and will help us move our district forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry, before you leave, I did have a quick question. So I love that you're doing this work. And I really appreciate that there was a 22% change in sense of belonging in one building. That's amazing. So that is, is my question. It is trends over time. So what are, what are some of the trends that are positive, like that one and other ones? And I guess along with what next steps will be with this data, I'm assuming part of it is looking at the students who didn't respond favorably and looking for patterns like is it all the kids who are new to the buildings? But those are the ones, or you know, if we can figure out which groups, if there is even a pattern among the groups that are not feeling a sense of belonging, we're not feeling any of the, any of the questions there. So is that something that you work with the building leadership to figure out? Or how does, what's the process of that?
I can give you an example of a conversation that we had around the table with our mental health specialist group, which would be at the middle school and high school level. And so they were looking at the data and some of the students that had not scored as favorably as others. And one of the comments was, I don't have this student on my caseload. This looks like a student that I maybe need to connect with. And so her thought was, I need to go and speak with the school counselor and see what they know and check in and make sure that the student is okay. Thank you.
So my hope is you're starting to see some of the things that are articulated in the strategic plan, kind of the path moving forward. You know, wonderful job talking about the whole child and how you utilize that data. The other side of this is communicating it on the teaching and learning side of the house as well. When you look at perseverance or, you know, your ability to be resilient, overcome. If we're not scoring well there, what does that mean from a teaching and learning perspective? What kind of lesson design, what kind of opportunities can we put increase with our students to build upon that skill? So I think there's a lot of potential in this data, helping not only from the development of a whole child, but also from a teaching and learning standpoint. A couple of other updates today or this evening. Just to let you know, we did have our first meeting of our generative AI committee last Friday on November 1st. We've got 26 members of this team made up of administration, teachers, and students. The initial look at this is looking at the responsible use of AI and how do we ensure compliance and have, or make sure our policies are relevant? And then build capacity of all stakeholders to understand AI and AI effectively. When we look at the emerging technologies strand of the strategic plan, AI is going to be a big player in this. So we're trying to look at this from a policy and implementation phase first. But then how do we vet the various things that are available that we can leverage them from a teaching and learning standpoint? I think it's the future of this group. So excited about that work as well. I know this evening we are asking you to approve something related to the softball facility improvement. So I've asked Greg Thompson to just give you an overview of that and certainly can give you an opportunity to answer any questions you have as well.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. So, good evening, Board. Tonight I want to talk about some facility upgrade at the softball field. And then while I've got the microphone, I also want to touch base on some business items you'll see later in the agenda. So first off, with the softball facility improvement, this is a booster project that will be completely funded by the boosters and in-kind work. It would, it is a proposed upgrade to our current hitting and pitching facility. It would fully enclose it for full, four-season use. They'd be adding lights and heat as well. Timeline, they'd like to start this fall and then hopefully have it ready for the start of the season, which would be late March. They have been working with Moody Nolan Architects, who did the original plan out there, the original design, and also Elford Construction, which has done work for us in Upper Arlington as well. So there is a license agreement that would allow them to build it and then donate it to us once it's complete. And that license agreement really spells out the details. It includes our approval of the design, confirmation that they have all the necessary funds and appropriate insurance before they start the project. They are responsible for all permitting, following code, and all laws. We have access during the entire construction process and it allows them access on to our property to do the work. Any change orders would be approved by us. And then once it is complete, it is donated outright to us. So those are kind of high-level view nuts and bolts of that license agreement. Location, as you can see on the slide, it is the exact same place as where the current batting cage is. It would enclose with matching brick to what is already out there. So it would match the architecture. Yeah, so that shows the current hitting facility there and then the proposed is where the location is. So, full disclosure, and you can see on this slide there where it's kind of highlighted, there is still a design issue we're working through is proximity to that foul line. It is in the exact same, it's the exact same footprint as where it is now, except the fence would turn into brick. So that is obviously something that, safety-wise, we need to make sure that we address that properly. So that is one thing that we are still working through and haven't finalized yet in the design. And then there again is the pictures of what we currently have and then what is proposed. Any questions?
Greg, is there any extra costs that we take on in the maintenance of the facility since it will be enclosed?
It'd be minimal, but yes, there is some additional cost, but we've looked at that in it.
That would all be on us. So they're, I can care for the building and then once it's donated, maintenance, everything is ours.
I'm pretty impressed with how quickly this, this thing, I mean, this was an idea late summer, you know, midsummer and how quickly John Ness in particular and the board like got this thing rolling. And now we're even talking about it being ready in late March. It's pretty impressive. I've been involved with quite a few projects and I don't think I've seen one move this quickly. So it is, it'll be great for the girls out there playing softball and I'm pretty excited to see this thing happen.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. My first meeting with them in September, they were very well-prepared. And then they took comments that I had for them and really went to town. They, they spent a lot of time with Elford and also Moody Nolan to make sure that they're keeping this moving. And the boosters, their fundraising has been incredible as well. Okay. And again, I'd like to just quickly touch base on a couple of items for business later. You'll see on the agenda in Operations 8C, there's a resolution for a meta-electric RFP. The approval of this would allow us to participate in the Meta Consortium RFP for the shopping of electric rates. It's very similar to what we did last year with Meta for our natural gas purchase. It is driven by two major factors. Our current three-year electric agreement through Meta is up July of '25. So we've got this summer that'll be up. And then fluctuations in the electric rates, typically you're better off to get a long-term agreement. So we'll be utilizing Meta's purchasing experts and consultants, and we'll be looking at a two- to three-year term with extensions added on to that, if it makes sense. So passing this resolution does not obligate us to do anything, except we will be participating in that shopping for the proposals. We could, if we like what we see, enter into a new master agreement moving forward, which is what we did with our gas experience.
Greg, can you talk just for a second about why we do things separately, like from the cities, electric aggregation work that they did?
So we are part of the Meta Consortium, which I don't know the exact number. It is over 200 school districts, libraries. So the volume, the purchasing power of that consortium is really beneficial to us.
I would just say, just so no one's confused, this is not Meta, like who owns Facebook. This is a consortium that comes together to purchase utilities. Yes, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Education consortium, yes. Thank you. And then moving on, also in the operations agenda, you'll see revision and auditorium rental fees. So due to increasing costs, we need to increase our pool rate. We will be increasing it just for that lowest group, which is the school affiliated organizations. The rate's only going to go from $20 an hour to $22 an hour. And we need to do that to cover our costs as they have increased. This will impact the UA Swim Club, which we have already had conversations with them. They are a great partner. We work very well together. So new rates would be effective January 1st.
So Greg, can I go back to softball? I'm sorry, it's something just popped in. Can you explain to me, like, do we anticipate baseball is going to want any improved facilities as a result of this? Or just kind of tell me what's going on, if we know of anything?
Not, not at this point. They, they go off-site to a different facility and they are happy with that. And then the last item that you'll see is Construction 9A Owner's Representative for Master Planning Phase 2. So we have gone through the RFP process with that. We received two submittals, Concord Addus and Turner Construction. We were very pleased with both of those proposals. In October, we did in-person interviews and did a full evaluation on them. And we would like to move forward with Turner. So that's what the recommendation is for tonight. Also of note, this agreement would only be for the master planning phase. If it were to move into a design and construction phase, we would have the ability to add that to their contract, but it is not part of a contract right now.
Greg, could you just talk a little bit about why the recommendation for Turner? What were some of the key drivers for you?
So there were two really big ones. Both of the companies do this for a living and they, again, they both do really well. The previous experience we had with Turner weighed heavy. Everyone, I wasn't here, but everyone that I've talked to has been very, very pleased. Great things is all I've heard about the experience with Turner. So not only that, they've got the relationships developed. They know the district. They know the building. So that's a big piece of it. And then price was also a large driver.
And I would just say to reiterate that, having been on the board, Turner did an excellent job. This was during the building phase of really pushing back when we had change orders. And they were, worked really hand-in-hand with Chris Potts to make sure and Andy to make sure that we were really being thoughtful about the tax dollars that were going out to build our schools and to ensure that when there were things that really the construction company should have been taking on, they, he pushed back very much and I think got us to a place that was really great. You know, we stayed right where we needed to be. So.
All right. Turning it back over to Dr. Hunt.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick updates and we'll move on to the star of the show tonight with the five-year forecast. We continue to move forward with strategic planning. Board, you should have a draft of the implementation plan with some performance target drafts as well in your weekly report on Friday. We do have a town hall next Tuesday night. That is going to be a very brief presentation with then a lot of opportunities for folks to go out and meet with individuals that have been involved in implementation planning, talk through, put things in context, and get some additional feedback. So look forward to that next week as well.
About real quick, before you move on, the two surveys that are out there right now, what is the deadline for community members to the building teams? And then the feedback on that?
You're talking about facility?
Oh, yeah. I'm getting ahead of myself.
No, that's okay. So Facility Master Planning, we did kickoff. We had two community meetings. We are in kind of that assessment phase as of right now. We will continue to engage with our community. You can, you can still sign up for building teams and we're still taking that data and information. And we gave out a QR code at those meetings and we have it on the presentation tonight as well. So far, I think we were around 65 individuals that have signed up to participate in building teams who encourage folks to give their feedback and if they have the time to support and participate in these meetings.
And the deadline for that?
I think we, we haven't closed those down yet. I would say probably as we get closer to our next set of meetings, what's December 3rd. So I would say by, before So I would say by before Thanksgiving, we'll, we'll close them. All right. And then, you know, for your calendars, uh, we do, uh, have postcards. I think they're going to be hitting mailboxes this week for the next round of community engagement. Uh, the first set of, uh, meetings was really about process. Here's what we're going to do. This is going to start to get into results of some of the assessments. So facility assessment, uh, educational assessment. And we'll really start to dig into, um, the, the planning for these buildings at that point. So encourage you to share with your constituents and obviously welcome you to participate as well. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now at the public participation portion of the meeting. The board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing the school community to express themselves on school matters of community interest. I would like to thank those of you who have signed up for participation today and ask that you start by stating your first name. You can feel free to share any other information you believe would be relevant, such as group affiliation or whether or not you have children in the district. We had, want to hear from as many people as possible. So please keep in mind that you'll have up to three minutes to address the board. Please direct your comments to the board as a whole. If you have questions, please know that this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. But we will make sure to follow up with you. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that student privacy laws prevent the district from disclosing information related to any student. And so you cannot discuss individual students during the public participation. Mr. Geisfeld, do we have public participants today?
We do. We have, uh, two, two individuals and this is a little ironic. They're both Jim C. So, um, the first Jim C., please come up to the podium. Soon as you start talking.
Two bacteria walked into a bar. Order a drink. Bartender says, we don't serve bacteria here. And bacteria say, we work here, we're staff. Thank you all for your excellent service to our schools in Upper Arlington. I'd like to share a story, three army veterans and tie them into education. I was trained in the army to be a warrior. I completed armor airborne and ranger schools. All three were my third choices. I envisioned myself less as a warrior, more like Saint Francis, Paciسي, Mahanes Gandhi or Medgar Evers or Hugh Thompson. I imagine you don't know who Thompson is. That's what I want to tell you about. In July of nineteen seventy-one, I was walking in the stockade at Fort Benning, Georgia. At that moment, Lieutenant William Kelly of the Milai massacre fam- uh, fame was being moved from the stockade to house arrest. In the Milai massacre, three hundred and forty-seven women, men, children, babies were murdered by US troops. What many did not know until later was the actions of warrant officer Hugh Thompson. While flying in the helicopter over the battlefield, he saw many dead bodies and US soldiers moving towards a bunker with more live Vietnamese. He landed his helicopter and told his crew to, uh, cover him. He approached his fellow Americans and told them to stop. And if they moved towards Vietnamese, he would open fire. The advanced American stopped. And the Vietnamese were unharmed. Some American leaders tried to cover up the tragedy, but the press got the story out. As happens with differences in perspective, Officer Thompson was vilified by some of the fellow soldiers and regarded as a hero by others. Hugh Thompson died at sixty-two of cancer and William Kelly died at eighty. I honor Officer Thompson. In nineteen ninety-eight, Thompson returned to the village where he met some of the people they saved during the killings. He reported that one of the women they had helped came up to him and asked, why didn't the people who committed the crime come back with you? She said, so we could forgive them. I hope we are teaching our students that wars are tragedies and not glorious events. Some wars are necessary evils to, are necessary evils to stop unprovoked and violent aggression as in World War Two and the Korean conflict. Some wars are dubious value as the con- conflicts in Vietnam and Afghanistan, from which American disengaged and less than in honorable way. Our students need to know the difference between when a war is necessary and one should be averted. More importantly, I think we are teaching our students, we should teach our students the ways of honorable and moral living. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim C. Number two.
Good evening, I'm Jim. So great educators like Mr. Pomeroy and his colleagues know that writing, reading and critical thought are inextricably linked. That knowledge and vocabulary depth are the core components of all three. And all must be nurtured together, beginning in kindergarten. Once fully implemented, this pedagogy will create virtuous cycles that amplify the great things we are doing at the high school level, such as the UA Hub, college head start, AP classes, and especially our writing-heavy international baccalaureate program. Reading is best viewed as an interface between vision and spoken language comprehension. When kids learn the symbol to sound correspondence of decoding, simple black marks on a page give them instant access to the vocabulary and knowledge they stockpiled before entering school. Yet decoding skills have a very low ceiling effect. Comprehension and critical thought hinge on vocabulary depth and background knowledge. This is why both must be nurtured while teaching decoding skills, which we are doing. Behold, our first virtual, virtuous cycle. As kids learn to read, their spoken language comprehension improves dramatically. They become much better listeners. Writing development triggers huge gains in reading skills, our second virtuous cycle. Mr. Pomeroy and his colleagues are implementing the Hockman writing method, which is used in all classes and all grade levels. This system greatly enhances students' ability to synthesize knowledge, engage in critical thought, our third virtuous cycle. Last month, the board spent three hours with Mr. Pomeroy examining the minutia, the state report card. I urge you to do the same on this front. Let's also find ways to share these fascinating and important concepts with our community. My brief commercials do them little justice. Our schools are already among the best anywhere. Because of the great leadership we have, they will be much better in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Mr. Geisfeld.
All right. Hope you guys are ready for some fun. Right? So tonight we're going to talk about the, uh, five-year forecast. And if you remember, the five-year forecast is required by the state, um, Ohio. And it's done twice a year, once in November and then following up air, air revision in May, whether you need one or not. The five-year forecast typically shows the three years of our, three years of history and then five years of projections, a- as you know. So we're going to go over tonight, um, what I recommend as the, as the November filing that we would do with the, uh, Board of Education or with, from the Board of Education to the, uh, how department of education workers. Um, but with that, I think it's important that through the last month or so, uh, I spent some time with the community task force, financial task force. We kind of reviewed this with them. They made some suggestions, had some input. I reviewed it again with the, uh, with the treasure finance committee made up of, uh, Lori and Liz and kind of looked at that too, to really figure out a way to show things potentially differently. So when you look at the five-year forecast, um, this time around, you will see that we've totally changed our, um, basically the way it looks. So there's more graphs, less words, to really try to, um, share our story. So we'll see how that goes this, probably with the rest of this year. And then if we need to go ahead and revamp it, we will. But just trying to give it a new taste and a new flavor of this is what's going on in the district. Okay. So what I'm going to do tonight then is really spend the first little part, uh, of this, of this first couple of slides in the twenty thousand foot view. And then I'm going to spend some time comparing the current forecast of the November one versus what you approved in May. And then we'll spend a couple of minutes afterwards on, um, key assumptions that are in this forecast and also some risks that are in this. So as we're, as a member, uh, I guess as a reminder of how the, um, revenue is made up. I think it's important to remember that eighty-two percent of our revenue in the, in the past, but also currently is tied to local taxes. Local taxes is your real estate taxes and that's also what the, uh, are the commercial to these pay for public utility, uh, property tax. And you can see of that hundred and four million dollars, a hundred and one million of that is, is real estate. And when you think about valuations, as a reminder, again, residential, all of us make up ninety percent of the valuation up here in, here in Upper Arlington. The state funding is thirteen percent. Um, the important part here is to realize of that seventeen million dollars, only six million of that is tied to the fair school funding plan that's passed, right? So we'll talk about that a little bit later, but just to realize the formula that the state uses to fund schools, we get about six and a half million dollars for that this coming year. Um, a hundred million or one million of that really relates to restricted funds. That's more like the money they give us for wellness. That's to be used for certain things. Or, uh, when it comes to this year in particular, some, um, stipends we get for the science of reading that we can go ahead and, and, and pay our teachers with. But the majority of this is the state share of local taxes, which is really the homestead rollback credits. Um, as you know, the state pays a portion of some of your taxes and that comes to about nine point six million dollars of total revenue. So that's really where the majority of state revenue comes from. And then all other revenue, which you can see is a much smaller amount of about five percent. But we were talking about true, uh, taxes and real estate taxes. And, um, you can see if you add the projected local taxes, plus the state share of taxes, all kind of tied to, uh, taxes overall. You know, you're talking almost, uh, ninety percent of our revenue somehow is tied to taxes. On the expenditure side, just as a reminder again, you have eighty percent of our budget tied to payroll and benefits, as you would expect, as we are very much of a people-driven business here. Uh, fourteen percent is tied to purchase services. As a reminder, purchase services, it's like professional and technical services such as that ten million dollars, a large portion of it relates to our contracts with the ESC. So whether it's our parapros, whether it's our substitutes, those types of positions fall in there. We have utilities. Um, Greg did a good job talking about our consortium. Um, the sad part of what we're having to deal with right now is our contract ends this year with electric. We have had a below, because we locked it in almost four years earlier, that contract. We've been purchasing electric for really below cost. Now all of a sudden, we're going to see, not this year, but next year, we're going to see up to a thirty-five, forty percent increase in our utilities. Cause now they're catching us back up the market because that contract is over. But it shows you the importance of being in some of these consortiums that we are part of right now. Um, then you have the repairs, leases, tuition contract, or tuition contracts with student services, those types of positions, about four point three million dollars. And then we have others, others relates to, um, operating supplies, uh, capital outlet, those things. Those items are about seven million dollars total. So you can see what truly impacts the district, as you're not surprised, it's real estate taxes and it's personnel. Um, and we'll focus on that a little bit. This is a picture or a graph of revenues either exceeding or under expenditures. So you can see in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, our expenditures exceeded revenue. What happened in twenty-two, the board or the community passed a levy and we started to receive additional funds. So you can see in twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five, our revenue exceeded expenditures. And then you can see that for the next three or four years, we're projected that our revenue, our expenditures exceed revenue. This, just so you know, is a normal levy cycle, right? We expect this. This is the way, the way schools are funded. Because there is really no inflationary growth, but our expenditures grow with inflation and, and growth. Um, this is what you typically see. So you see a, a deficit spending, then a couple of years of revenue over, over expenditures, and then you get back to the deficit spending again. And that's typically why you're on that three or four year cycle, especially when there's not a lot of, uh, state funding offsets with the real estate taxes for us. Okay. I just want to make sure that when we see this though, uh, I just want people to understand, we expect this every so, so many years, we see this. This has not changed from when I started here eighteen years ago. The column on the left or the, the spreadsheet, the sheet on the left or the graph on the left here shows you what our fund balance is expect, cash balance is expected to be, um, at, and, uh, last year in twenty-four, then where we expected to be in twenty-nine. I think the important part is even though it looks like a lot of money, we need to bring it down to how many days of operations is that break? It's very easy, um, you're altered here. So in twenty-five, this year, we expect to be about two hundred days of, of cash balance at the end of the year. But you can quickly see as our expenditures start exceeding our revenue, how quickly that starts to, um, grow. And before in twenty-nine, we expect to be below our, our reserve policy at the board set for ninety days. So I think it's important to just understand that once you start having deficit spending, it grows pretty quickly because it's year on top of year on top of year. Which again, it's expected, it happens in all districts. Um, it just depends on the magnitude of that. We've mentioned budget reserve. I think it's important. We had this discussion last year in November and the board at, at that time, um, decided to go ahead and go back to our twenty-five percent of expenditures or ninety days, um, cash balance. And with the five-year forecast and how it's set up on the state, um, state documents, there really is no spot anymore for a budget reserve approved by the, uh, district. So what you're going to see is on the five-year forecast that, um, state prints out, it will show a cash balance of the blue line right here of seventy-one million dollars, sixty-nine million dollars, fifty-two million dollars. Um, there's not a line for that budget reserve, uh, as we put it in the past. That really is made for a higher revised code type of budget reserve, not so much for this, uh, policy drip budget reserve. So it's important as in the footnotes of the five-year forecast, but also as we talk about this over the next several years, we are focused on this yellow orange line, right, outside of our reserve. So when we have make, make decisions and, um, conversations of how we're going to fund various things, we need to keep in mind that orange line after the reserves are taken. And remember that we created this reserve once again for fiscal responsibility to go ahead and shield us between budget, for unforeseen budgetary constraints. You can read that, but we all went through that. But the importance of this really is to set us up for the future and for future discussions. And if you remember, this, this allowed us to go ahead and push levy back two years again. So this has helped us in various ways. And I just want to make sure you understand that the lot, the blue line is going to be what is shown in the five-year forecast. But then this is all in the notes to explain how we make decisions based on that yellow line. So let's switch to a comparison right now on where are we in November, November of twenty-four versus, May of, May of twenty-four. I think it's important to keep in mind that we're really only comparing four years, right? Because last year, in May of twenty-four, the fiscal year twenty-nine didn't exist in the forecast. So really looking at those, at those four years plus in the actual year of twenty-four. And you can see the two large items that really, uh, have changed from the forecasts are the real estate line and the public utility line. And why have those changed, um, really the first couple of years, why so much? Don't forget the real estate, right? Fiscal year twenty-four, we're down, we're down about one point two million dollars. That was once again a timing difference. Remember, because the business, the mid, the biz, some of the businesses paid a, um, they typically pay a larger percentage of their axes in the beginning of the year, which falls in one fiscal year. But this last year, they actually paid a, a larger percentage in the second half of the year, which falls in another calendar year. So you can see that we were up down one point two million dollars in twenty-four, but then we were up a million dollars this year because of, for that timing difference. Then you can see just some smaller tweaks, um, from that there and then on out for the real estate. Public utilities here, you'll see that we are, uh, this year expecting a one point one million dollar drop from where we had, um, potentially looked at the previous year. Just how that plays out that for the next three years. Why is that? Public utility evaluations decreased by about nine percent. Similar to what you have seen in the past, when we talk about various either businesses or, uh, residential challenged our property values. Here, the public utilities group challenged the values of, of their, um, not only their, their. Here, the public utilities group challenged the values of, of their, not only their, their buildings are more like their lines. So like their underground lines when it comes to electric or when it comes to gas or those types of things were challenged. And this did not just hit up Arlington. This hit a, so I'm talking to a couple of my colleagues, they experienced this in Worthington and Dublin and, and various areas around here. But we didn't expect that. And that decrease caused the million dollar increase that will be with us then each of the next five years.
Andy, real quick question on that. Hearing the way you just explained that, is that a localized valuation then? So we receive the utility taxes based off of the valuation of the public utilities that are in the school district geography?
Correct.
Okay.
And what you'll see is so the, so the AEPs, the Columbia Gases of the world, right? They obviously looked at all of central Ohio and it may have been outside of central Ohio too, but in my colleagues, everyone saw a decrease in their
Thank you.
Evaluations. Welcome. So then let's switch to expenses. Expect, oh, actually, let me jump back here. So all, so all these changes you saw, I think it's important to realize revenue wise, they really only impact this by point three percent, point three, four percent of total revenue. You can see this looks like some larger dollar amounts, but very minimal when we look at the whole five-year impact. Expenditure side then, same conversation. You can see when we add up all the expenditure changes, et cetera, on some of these larger balances, that is an impact of one point six two percent. So still not a huge impacted our expenditures, but definitely worth talking about. And here you can see again, as you would expect, the salaries and benefits have some larger fluctuations. We'll talk about why, why those occurred versus the past purchase services and then supplies. We'll, we'll key in on those four items. I think it's important to realize once again, we're comparing what we know now in November to what we knew back in, in May, right? So salary wise or personnel services, what really impacted that? We planned on some additional FTEs or positions being in the general fund for this coming year, but thirty positions actually got added to the general fund this year. A portion of those, thirteen positions of those were thirteen of those positions were from SRS funds. Remember, SRS funds were the federal money we got. We anticipated moving, remember even during the levy time, we talked about this, last levy that once the SRS funds were gone, were we gonna continue some of those programs? And the board agreed to continue those programs. And so we moved about eight and the majority of those positions at the time were for online academy. So we moved those roughly seven, eight positions in the forecast already. What we didn't do is there was a, our contract with Ohio State at the time, right? I had that in purchase services because we assumed maybe it would have been with Ohio State. We ended up bringing those in-house. So you saw the decrease in purchase services that we're gonna talk about. This led to some of that increase then in payroll because it went from a purchase service to a payroll and, and benefits, right? So not that we didn't expect it, it's just different category wise. Student services is one area though, that we talked about a lot this summer. Definitely grew a lot more than we expected position wise. And those about thirteen and a half positions, a majority of those related to intervention specialist, a couple with our, our ELL, ELA, ELL students. Also a psychologist, speech, those types of positions were really added on this year to support our kids where they needed it. And then enrollment wise, we saw about five point four positions added. We were expected more of the two or three rate. So therefore, when you add all these up, you can see then how the forecast changed by a little over, by over a million dollars based on these positions from what we had originally. When you think about personnel services, then you think about benefits too, right? Because our benefits, about half of our benefits are tied to insurance and the other half is tied to the pension. As you're, as you know, the pension costs for districts are with STRS and SERS. We really, we have no control over those. We are by code required to pay a certain amount. So as payroll goes up, that percentage, the amount that goes to benefits goes up just because it's a set, a flat percentage. It's fourteen percent, right? So we pay fourteen percent of pension costs to STRS and SERS. The other part of that is medical insurance. You know, over the years, I've been, I've been able to share good news with you that we've had. Our claims have been below average and we've really seen very little increase over the, over the last eight years. Five of those years, we saw no increases in our premiums, right? Which is unheard of. And because we're self-funded, we're able to go ahead and have control over that. Well, things are starting, starting to catch up with us now. And we had, we had this past year was a bad claim year for us. So we had high claims. So, and we expect through our conversation that we had, a couple of months ago, don't forget, we're, we're, we are self-funded. So we use that portion over our reserves to keep that increase lower than that was projected, right? So our increase this coming calendar year is seven point nine nine percent. If claims continue where they are, and if the costs of medical services continues to increase, because we know right now that Anthem is negotiating with the Ohio State Group. And then they're also gonna be negotiating with the Ohio Health Group. So they're up for that. And we know that they, both groups are asking for a fairly large increase. So there's some tough negotiations going on right now. So we expect that for the next several years, that will be around between eight and eighteen percent. We expect one year of eighteen percent increases potentially. I hope I'm wrong, but knowing where we're trending, our community task force finance group was surprised how lucky you are, how not lucky, how fortunate we've been because of our lower claims or costs. They're typically seeing double digit increases every year in their, in their businesses. So therefore they were surprised to see this. They said even the eighteen percent that I'm projecting potentially for twenty-six is not unexpected based on where they see things going. But this was, this alone really increased. When you think about, I had seven percent, basically seventy-eight percent increases in every year by up, by increasing those potentially medical, medical premiums. You can see how that impact there is, I mean, between one and two million dollars almost each year based on that group.
I'd also note, one of the workshop sessions I went to yesterday was related to school funding generally. And the line item that the presenters had highlighted was around insurance being one of the largest increases in cost to school districts relative to salary and benefits across the board. And every head in the room was nodding. So this is definitely across the board for everybody.
I just wanted to go back because we talked, you talked about the five point four additional positions. And I just want to say, like, you did mention it briefly, but just that we do account for where we see our projections in the budget, but sometimes however though that growth happens, we have to add positions in a way that is hard to anticipate. So just not that we're not
No, that's a great point.
Using that data and
Dr. Hunt's mentioned this before is, is if we could pick where the growth was, the district, we would be able to really control our, our cost, right? We're, we're, but we don't know where it's gonna go. If all of a sudden, you know, the majority of these students just happen to move greens you fourth grade one year, that's gonna create an extra position. Whereas if it's spread out across the district, it would be known, it would be known in position, right? So you're absolutely right, Jenny, that we might have, we may have had two or three because of the true numbers of increase of enrollment, but based on where they landed, that ended up being about five and a half. Very good. Good point.
Just want to add in also that this part of it is, is also connected to because we allow our parents choice within the building, within the district. And so one way for us to exert control would certainly be to tell parents they have to go to their home schools. But we don't do that. So that, that's a part of the
No, that's a good point too. That. And then when you're, when you're on multiple programs out of, out of one school, it obviously increases too when it comes to Barrington and you're progressive and, you know.
Yeah. I'd also layer in some of the in-sourcing. For example, the Ohio State contract, we're actually maximizing, I, I think we went from what was the equivalent of two FTE to five?
It was, it was actually more, it was, it was more, but including some, some admin costs, et cetera. So what we're able to do is for the same cost, you're right, add, add an additional
Yeah.
Health specialist.
So.
So on purchase services, we just talked about, the reason you see a decrease there is because we anticipated a portion of that to be of that OSU to be a purchase service. The other item you'll see here is last year and this year, our utility bill, our, our utilities was down. But that was because once again, the prices we had locked in, plus we had warmer winters than we had in the past, right? We expect those to increase, which is why you don't see the, when you look at the changes again on purchase services over here. You can see like how this year expect nine hundred nineteen thousand dollars to be a, a change for us. But then how that slowly starts to decrease because our utilities offsetting some of that decrease. Then supplies, you'll see an increase also. And what that, does that relate to? About four hundred twenty thousand, that relates to additional funding that we got in last year for, from the state of Ohio for purchases of, of ELA. Well, as you know, we're, we're piloting two programs right now. We expect those expenditures to occur here in January, February timeframe. So therefore that's a one-year flip for us. But you also see about two, three hundred thousand dollar increase every year that really relates to the prices of textbooks and software continues to skyrocket. So therefore that's what you'll see. A more actual cost than it was before in May. So when you take the revenue, you take the expenditures, all those fluctuations we just talked about, then this is really the impact of it. So you can see fiscal year twenty-four, which is last year. We, we came, we came ahead, our cash balances grew by about two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We expect this year because of the changes we made, we'll see a decrease from where we originally projected of cash balance by about a million dollars. But this is the key though. So the impact overall for all four years through twenty-eight by these changes we made, it's about a twelve million dollar impact on our cash balance at the end of twenty-eight. But once again, let's take the, the dollar amounts because dollar amounts are, are big for us as residents, just because we're used to our own incomes. You start breaking this down by our daily balances, right? So it's, so the green is where we were with the May forecast and with these adjustments. And you can see the orange is the balances through fiscal year twenty-eight of what we'll have on hand based on our cash balances. Questions on this? So that was the comparison, right? Of kind of all the changes that have occurred over the last several months as we were planning, et cetera. This really is the key assumptions of what's driving us for the next several years now. So going out, so, so forget about the comparison. What's driving this five-year forecast in November? One of the things to keep in mind is we don't put, we don't put levies on our, in our forecast till they've been passed. Right? So you, so you'll see very little change in our real estate line taxes. The only caveat there is that we originally had a seven percent increase in next evaluate, uh, next appraisal. We bumped it, we bumped it up at ten percent. Could it be more? Should it be more? The answer is probably yes. The challenge we have is we are in the middle of a discussion. We, the legislature is in the middle of a discussion right now to really figure out how they're gonna change the appraisal process or how it's gonna impact seniors or, or fixed living groups. So therefore we don't want to estimate a twenty-five percent increase when based on some changes, it can very easily be down a lot less than that. Plus remember, even with a increase, right? House bill nine twenty, which is part of the constitution, basically, we'll bring it down, we'll bring it down regardless, right? So if all of a sudden we have a twenty-five percent increase evaluation, that does not mean that our real estate taxes grow to be five percent. Right? We, we all know that we've been through that. We try to explain that every, every couple of years. But I, but I think that's important to, to remember that whatever happens in our property values, it does not materially increase or that, that does not materially impact us because of House Bill nine twenty. State revenue, this is what, this was really interesting after being down at OSBA yesterday, right? What's gonna happen with state revenue? There is that fair school funding plan and the idea was that over time it would be phased into a hundred percent. Right now, we're at about sixty-six percent this year of phase in. By phase in, I mean, if you run us through the fair school funding plan, the, the number comes to X, right? We get sixty-six percent of X right now because of, of the phase in process. What they were looking to do originally was the following year would be eighty-seven and a half percent and the year after that would be a hundred percent. There is a lot of questions going on right now is whether the state could, can actually truly do that full phase. And some of the conversations we heard yesterday, it sounds like that it'll, there'll be very limited changes in the state funding that's, that's coming by any budget. With that, the challenge is if it was fully implemented, by the way they were talking, that would be about a two million, two nine, nine dollar increase for us each year. If you think that's our increase, think about the six hundred plus districts across the state and how, I mean, how costly that would be, right? So obviously any increase would be great, but the area that we are expecting to increase is there's inputs and outputs in this formula. And the inputs are basically cost, cost ratios, cost unit amounts that they use to go ahead and say you're, you're based on your enrollment, we expect you to have this number of teachers times this cost equals this. Right? This cost part of it, right now is based on two thousand twenty-two values. The, the hope is that, and the plan is that they will increase those input ups to the two thousand twenty-four values. If that's the case, we're estimating a, a four percent increase just based on the cost inputs, which would then allow us to see a four percent, basically a four percent increase. So we're assuming that the phase in doesn't happen, but we're assuming the indexing basically does happen. Questions on that? It's important to realize, could be a six million dollar swing over the forecast for us. I think based on the economy and, and how some numbers aren't coming in where things were expected. I would be very surprised to see a, much of an increase in the face of this next finding.
When we passed the last budget last year, it was supposed to be, what percent next year?
So next, so the plan originally was that it would be eighty-seven and a half percent next year, then a hundred percent of following.
So eighty-seven, a hundred, right?
Eighty-seven and a half percent.
Eighty-seven and a half and then
Hundred percent.
So we're not expecting that.
Personnel, we kind of talked about that again. We have very few increases anticipated in, in this five-year forecast. We do have a couple, a couple each year based on enrollment or enrollment growth, et cetera. But there's not much additional because you saw the impact of what happens. We added so many additional positions. So right now the plan is that we will, if, if things need to occur, there'll be a lot more reallocation than there would be actually additional positions.
And Andy, those additional positions link back to the projections from a headcount perspective that you do every year, I think.
Best we can.
January. Yeah.
And then benefit wise, I think it's important, again, we talked about this, but just to realize the projections and the benefits are, are much higher than they have in the past. So we're expecting anywhere between a seven point nine, which is this year and eighteen percent, which ideally, well, it could be next year, it could be the year after. Those assumptions basically drive the majority of the, of the cost increases, et cetera, on, on the bigger items. Questions on this? Some areas to keep in mind that, that could change on us fairly quickly at that times. Or risks that are, risks and uncertainty that we just don't know about, that we made some assumptions for. Rising interest rates, inflation, right? The economy, who knows where it's gonna be. I mean, obviously we had the election, but then we had, you know, the rates were going up and then they're going down. So it'll be interesting to see as it settles here in the next couple, and then next year or two, kind of where that plays out. But why is that important to us? If our housing values continue to grow, part of the question is, will our delinquencies grow then? Because can, with, with real estate taxes going up, et cetera. Or will people, will fewer people eventually not sell their houses just because of where the, like the rates they're locked into, et cetera? So therefore you don't have as much turnover, which therefore then could impact enrollment or those types of items. Right? Enrollment growth, we just talked about, you know, right now we have our projections and they're, and they're running fairly close. But you know, over the next five years, we're looking at a couple hundred student potentially increase. All of a sudden that would change and all of a sudden we get a bigger bubble. Obviously that impacts our staffing needs, that impacts benefits then, that impacts, you know, you look at it. So that could happen. Legislation, we talked about who, who knows what's gonna happen with legis, with legislation. But we know that property taxes, as we heard yesterday, are, are being a, will be a discussion over the next couple of years. So how does that impact the next re-appraisal? And does it impact taxes we're already collecting or just new taxes or, or kind of how that plays out? So that's a risk or uncertainty we don't know about. We talked about the economy already with the state funding, whereas if the state's projections, when it comes to income taxes and those types of things, don't come in where they, where they expected to, how that impacts state funding. And then labor, you know, labor is one thing we haven't talked about recently. But labor is becoming a bigger, bigger challenge in certain positions, right? We, we already know that when it comes to transportation, we're fortunate right now. We start reading about some of these districts around us that can't fully staff a transportation department. So therefore, you know, obviously with more demand, less supply, what happens? more demand, less supply, what happens, right? It increases rates, so those are things that, that we can't control, but that could very easily over the next couple of years increase on us more than we had projected forecast. So those items are just important to remember, a forecast is really as only as good as it is today, whereas tomorrow it could very easily change based on something we don't know. I think that's important to keep in mind as we're having those discussions. Questions on that? You have the five year forecast in front of you as, I mean, the, the detail of it, that is what will be filed with the the Otter State and also with the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. And then that will go onto the website, et cetera. We will continue to, to evaluate this. Remember this forecast is also what is compared then monthly to our expenditures and revenue. So that's kind of our baseline now going forward. So let me jump to then, not a lot of discussion here, but so if we compare the numbers I just shared with you to where we ended up in October, how are things playing out, right? Because we had to go and get what really finalized these numbers before October even started. So therefore there are some fluctuations, but you can see revenue is about five hundred thousand dollars better than expected. And benefits is our expenditures is thirty six thousand dollars better than expect, expected here in November. So about a half million dollar, uh, better, uh, better variance than expected. You can see revenue wise, taxes are kind of where we thought they'd be, state revenues kind of where we thought would be. What changed really is we had two larger months of interest income. And who knows where the interest rates are going to be over the next, you know, six months to nine months. But right now, I really hope that the interest exceeds our expectations, because that could lead to, you know, over a million dollars by the end of the year. If, if the interest rates continue to exceed where we thought they would be. And expenditure wise here, you can see very, we're tracking kind of where we thought we'd be right now, which is what you'd expect when you, when we just made those numbers here about three or four weeks ago. And you can see that go forward. A lot of talking, but I think it's important that, that press understand kind of where we are. I think the key part to realize is the fund balances in particular, or the cash balances is what we expect, right? We expect to see a expenditures exceed revenue, revenue exceed, exceeded expenditures and then back to be in the expenditures exceed revenue. That is a typical cycle of levies and what we're locked into. The other thing that we talked about briefly and I made a comment about it back in May. We are, we are really working hard to really extend this current levy. One more year, so it's November twenty five, ideally working on that number twenty six. We'll have some additional conversations over that over the next several months, but our hope is that we can really continue to work that process through. Questions?
I saw that you said we use some of our reserve to help offset increasing premiums this year.
So great question, I'm glad you'd ask that. There's certain, different, there's different types of reserves, right? So this, the reserve I'm talking about is our insurance reserve, which is a separate fund. It has nothing to do with this twenty five percent of, of annual expenditures.
But you're also, they're projecting next year might be up to eighteen percent or would.
So we, so we will not, we knew using the reserves was probably a one time, was a one time one. And, and the, and the hope is truly, when you have reserves, that you can help deflate our, smooth out the increases or decreases in premium. So what we were able to do, instead of seeing a twelve percent increase this year, we were able to bring it down to about, about an eight percent increase. So the hope is that some of the claim, some of the high, high claimants will actually have a healthier years coming. So therefore some of those claims go down, so we don't reach that sixteen percent, right? But the whole idea is to kind of smooth things out. But by us basically buying that four percent of premiums, we will not have that opportunity next year. So we'll have to go ahead and take that potential hit the following year.
Well, some of those increased, I remember it was a year or so ago, we, we had a lot of teachers that were pregnant, which is awesome, had children, which is awesome. Is that the reason why, is that a big, because?
No, no, we actually have.
Abnormal number, like it was a higher than normal number of teachers.
I wish that, I wish that was the case, to be honest with you. But those are not our high claimants.
Okay.
I mean, our high claimants unfortunately are, are.
Unfortunate situation.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if it was what you were talking about, those are, those types of expenses are nice, because those are basically one time or two time.
That's what I was wondering.
These right now, we're hoping one or two of our large claimants kind of fall off and, and have get back on the, a healthier transition, so to speak. And if that occurs, that should allow us to then go ahead and see a, not as large of an increase, but we just don't know right now until early in the.
And we do have insurance for ourselves, don't we?
We do.
Or somebody who has like gets above a certain number.
Absolutely. So, so right now our individual threshold, a threshold is about anyone who hits about two hundred thousand dollars in claims. Then the, then the stop loss insurance covers it for us. We're bumping it up, you remember we're bumping it up to two twenty five this next year to go ahead and for that same reason. But the idea is we want, we are not, we limit our risk to that two hundred thousand dollars to two twenty five. This year in particular, we had more claimants than you would have expected exceed that two hundred thousand dollar. Which is why we came to talk to you a couple of months ago about the huge increase they wanted to do for us when it came to the stop loss premium. But by increasing it by twenty five thousand dollars, it helped offset some of that.
I think we had previously shared too, that with the different agencies typically affects, it more affects purchase services, because substitute coverage benefits.
That's a good, I mean, that is a good point of, of what you'll see is our, our costs for substitutes, definitely the last several years has increased with, with these point because of our, our teachers and really just the natural things in life. All right? Great.
All right, I would seek a motion to approve consent agenda items five A through eight.
Once Bob, I have a question for you. Okay. And it's something I, my brain just took a minute to process. And while we were listening to the presentation on, on the survey results and things like that. I'm glad Denise is here. She had mentioned that they, they looked at some data and they said, this kiddo needs, we need to go visit this kiddo. But I thought the, that data was anonymous. But do we know who the kid, so that, that would be, I don't, I don't, for panorama, yeah, specifically?
Yeah, no, yeah, it's confidential data, but it's not anonymous. So the letters to the parents explicitly state that teachers and principals and our support staff will have access to individual level data as it pertains to them. So if I'm a particular fourth grade teacher, I would have access to looking at the individual data for the students that are on my roster. And those are the conversations that are happening now, like on our M T S S meetings. Went and we met with a couple of the M T S S leads to look at how they're utilizing that data in those conversations. So kids that are reporting as, that are reporting unfavorable responses to specific questions. They're able to tie that into maybe academic performance or lack of performance or lack of growth or gaps in achievement. And have holistic conversations about those students and what we can do to service them better. We know if you look at like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you have your basic shelter and physiological needs. But that middle level tier of that triangle specifically speaks to sense of belonging. And if you don't have sense of belonging and meeting that level of acceptance, you're not going to reach levels of achievement and creativity beyond that at the top. So that is a very important to us. We know our students, for the most part, we, we satisfy their basic physiological needs. But that sense of belonging is key to higher levels of achievement. So we are having those conversations about individual students. So we feel it's important that principals and teachers and counselors and mental health specialists look at that, at those responses.
Good question. Okay, the super, I'm sorry, we are at the that's where we're at. And I would like a motion to approve items five A through eight D.
So moved.
Mrs. Stump?
Hi.
Dr. Soder?
Hi.
Mrs. Trent?
Hi.
Dr. Santiani?
Hi.
And Mrs. McKenna?
Hi. And then next we have a motion to approve a resolution for the owner's representative.
So moved.
Mrs. Stump?
Hi.
Dr. Soder?
Hi.
Mrs. Trent?
Hi.
Dr. Santiani?
Hi.
Hi. And that, next I would seek a motion to approve the five year forecast and related assumptions.
So moved.
Mrs. Trent?
Hi.
Dr. Soder?
Hi.
Dr. Santiani?
Hi.
Mrs. Stump?
Hi.
Mrs. McKenna?
Hi. And then next I need a motion to approve item eleven athletics, the approval of personnel action items and the softball boosters licensing agreement.
So moved.
A second.
Mrs. Stump?
Hi.
Trent?
Hi.
Dr. Santiani?
Hi.
Dr. Soder?
Jane.
And Mrs. McKenna?
Hi. And finally, do we have any future agenda items?
So looking at the annual calendar, we would typically have, if we were doing an enrollment study, we'd bring that to the board in December. We're holding off and doing that in the spring just so it coincides with facility master planning. So we'll have, you know, routine business items, just our highlights, but nothing off of our calendar that we will be putting forward.
Thank you. And lastly, I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Mrs. Trent?
Hi.
Dr. Soder?
Hi.
Mrs. Stump?
Hi.
Dr. Santiani?
Hi.
Mrs. McKenna?
Hi. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here.